Yeah.
Left my phone in the car, thinking, my watch is too long.
Yeah.
My daughter, she's taking her doctorate exam in the morning and like, hopefully get out of here.
Yeah. Are you taking your daughter?
Really?
No, she's taking her doctorate. She's physical therapist, I've seen it a few times, huh?
It's exciting.
I hope so.
Oh, my God, I like rain. Parks and Parks and rain.
Good.
All right, everybody, all right, here we go. I am going to call the regular DeKalb City Council meeting of July 24th, 2023 to order. Roll call, please.
Zazada?
Here.
Larson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Perkins?
Here.
McAdams?
Here.
Verbic?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
Mayor Barnes?
Here.
Eight present.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item B, the Pledge of Allegiance. Can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Hyvee? Captain Hyvee, sorry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item C, approval of the agenda. Would take a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Move by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman Walker. Any comments or questions on that? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I.
All right, the agenda has been approved. Agenda Item D, Presentations. Number one, celebrating the retirement of Maureen Garrity after 28 years with Barb City Manor from 1980-- that's, math isn't right now. 1983 to 20-- no, it wouldn't be 983, but I can't do the math.
95.
95, thank you. 1995 to 2023. I imagine, City Manager, you'd like to kick us off?
I do, I do. Just to prolong this, Maureen, to your discomfort. But for those in the audience or in the listening audience tonight who aren't that sure, Barb City Manor is housed in a city-owned building. It's been managed since 1993 by Barb City Manor Incorporated. It was named Barb City Manor back in about 1979, if I'm correct. It's an independent, not-for-profit entity. It has its own volunteer governing board, and some members are here tonight. The facility serves as an affordable, independent living center for persons 62 years of age and older. It offers a very affordable studio in one-bedroom apartments with baths but no kitchens. People dine in an in-house dining room and wonderful food. The monthly rent includes three meals a day, weekly housekeeping, linen service, water, electricity, gas, refuse disposal, et cetera, et cetera, and wonderful staff who are on duty 24 hours a day. It's not an assisted living facility or nursing home. Residents can contract with other agencies for various kinds of support, but we are very fortunate to have them in our midst and also very fortunate that from 1979, there have only been four administrators, most recent is Maureen, and she is going to be retiring very soon. How many days?
Twelve.
There you go. But who's counting? Before we have Maureen take a bow, Sarah Davis, would you please stand up, who is the designated successor as administrator of Barb City Manor? So, without further ado, we thought it was appropriate to honor you, Maureen, and maybe you want to have a few remarks, and then we have a few little parting gifts for you.
Well, thank you so much. This is a lovely surprise to be honored at a city council meeting. Barb City Manor has been the perfect fit for me. I can't imagine working anywhere else. I am grateful to Ellen Tyne. She hired me as Assistant Administrator 28 years ago, and extraordinarily grateful to Avril Schreiber and Ellen Tyne for the solid foundation that they laid. Barb City Manor is thriving today because of their perseverance and dedication. I'm grateful to the leadership of the City of DeKalb, the mayors, city council members, city staff, for supporting our mission to serve lower-income seniors for nearly 45 years. You have been instrumental in helping us maintain the historic public hospital building and ensuring it meets current life safety codes while remaining affordable for DeKalb's elderly population. And I just have to say I'm grateful to Bill Nicholas. You were the DeKalb City Manager when I was hired 28 years ago, and your example of servant leadership helped me to grow into my roles at Barb City Manor. Besides motherhood, it was my first management position, so. And finally, I'm grateful to the citizens of DeKalb. In the mid-'70s, when the public hospital closed its doors, community members wanted the building to serve a meaningful purpose. There were many that believed it was ideally suited for a retirement home for lower-income seniors, and they were so right. And nearly 45 years later, their vision continues to bear fruit. And although Bill already pointed out, I'm happy to report that Barb City Manor is going to be in good hands. Sarah Davis will replace me as Executive Director. We're changing the titles. Auntie Ladin to Sarah's left, I have to, I have to check to see, is going to be the new Associate Director, and they are both longtime employees of Barb City Manor. They have an outstanding Board of Directors. Kate Narico is our Vice President, and they stand behind our staff, and together they will do their utmost with your support to further Barb City Manor's mission for years to come. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Maureen. All right, Maureen, go ahead and stay up there. So we got a couple photo op opportunities here, but first, I'd love if City Council could come on down. I did want to present with you, this is only the fifth one, fourth one, fourth, fourth one I've ever given out, but all your years as the City of DeKalb, I wanted to present a key to the city. That's absolutely wonderful. Yeah, congratulations. Thank you again. If you want to come up and get a photo with all of us, we'd love it. Scott? I know, I know, Jeff.
Jeff?
We're waiting. Three, two, one. Good.
And, and.
What's always on?
Yeah. So, a nicer person you'll never meet, but she has her own way of doing things, so we thought it was appropriate that we would give her a sign that says, this is the earth.
You all are more than welcome to leave. In fact, we can just stick around for one more thing, and then I'll let you all leave, because this is another just fun thing to be a part of. All right, moving on to Agenda Item D2, Proclamation, Yukeday, August 13th, 2023. I love this. Whereas the ukulele is known as the world's happiest instrument and is enjoyable for beginners and advanced players alike, we should open up every council meeting with this. Whereas the ukulele remains a very popular instrument with more than 1,700,000 ukuleles sold annually, wow, in the United States of America. And whereas the ukulele continues its decades-long inclusion in our culture and is of historic importance. And whereas playing the ukulele improves physical well-being, increases eye-hand coordination, relieves stress, and boosts the immune system. And whereas playing the ukulele has immense social benefits, bringing people together, providing both a common source of enjoyment and shared learning experience. And whereas the ukulele appeals to multiple generations, is affordable, and is physically accessible to many. Whereas the sole purpose of Yukeday in DeKalb is to bring people together who love the ukulele, to have fun and to build community. Whereas DeKalb has never held a citywide ukulele event. We need to remedy that. Therefore, I, Cohen Barnes, Mayor, declare August 13th, 2023, as official Yukeday in the City of DeKalb. All right, awesome. Now, I think, I think we have some representatives that, if you, if you have something to say, you can take a minute, we'd be happy to, and then we'd love to get a photo op with you as well.
Oh, wait, is she going to play it?
I see a ukulele. I don't know what that means.
It's a prop, it's a prop, we won't be performing today. So, I'm Jen Conley. I direct the Wild Blue Ukulele Orchestra, which is a nine-piece chamber ensemble of ukuleles, from soprano to bass, and we have some members here today. And we truly did just do this to bring people together, and music is a wonderful way to do that. The ukulele was sort of the COVID instrument, because it was accessible and inexpensive. So many people have a yuque that may not have previously, and so we wanted to build some energy around that and just bring people together for goodwill, and we appreciate your support in the city, so thank you much.
Well, thank you for doing that. Do you mind if we all come down and get a shot with you guys? All right, come on, everybody. Thanks for coming on, everybody. All right, everyone, feel free to go ahead and enjoy the rest of your night. I have a stage wall bar, Jen Hyvee, so no worries whatsoever. Appreciate you coming on tonight, and thanks for everything. All right, that was fun. All right, moving on to Agenda Item E, Public Participation. We have none. There's a couple that are coming up with L2 and L3. Moving on to Agenda Item F, Appointments. Number one, reappointing Steve Becker to the Planning and zoning commission for the completion of a five-year term through December 31st, 2027. And number two, reappointing Lynn Neely to the Finance Advisory Committee for the completion of a four-year term through December 31st, 2026, and as Chair for the completion of a two-year term through December 31st, 2024. Can I have a motion to approve these appointments?
So moved.
Second.
I missed it. I'll just do move by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Any comments or questions?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's how it works, man. When you get the gavel, you can ignore people, too. All right, hearing none, roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I.
The appointments have been approved, and I just got to say personally, I appreciate both of these individuals for their continuing service to the City of DeKalb. They both have done a phenomenal job, and it's great to have people in our community that continue to step up and want to serve and do the best we can for our citizens. All right, moving on to Agenda Item G, Consent Agenda. One, minutes of the regular city council meeting of July 10th, 2023. Number two, accounts payable and payroll through July 24th, 2023 in the amount of Three, Freedom of Information Act FOIA report, June 2023. Four, FY 23, 2023 Human Services Funding Second Quarter Report. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Move by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderwoman Zazada. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I.
The consent agenda has been approved. Moving on to Agenda Item H, Public Hearings. We have none. And then Agenda Item I, Considerations. Consideration of Preliminary Five-Year Fire Department Plan. City Manager, I just want to comment first, the background material was phenomenal. Going through, I actually had to go through it a few times just to be able to absorb it all, but you told a great narrative. You justified the reasoning behind it, and made it really easy for me to understand ultimately what we're trying to accomplish here. So I just want to thank you for that initially, but enlighten us.
I take it also from that, that I'm to be brief. But I want to thank you for the opportunity to make this presentation tonight. It's not often that the City of DeKalb looks to construct a new facility, and I think, and I think you all would agree, that if that is to happen, you and our residents expect a case to be made, and it should be a convincing case, and it should cover all the possible questions that might be raised concerning that particular case. So I've tried to do that in the background to tonight's meeting. I have not done this alone. In the course of the last couple of months in preparing and starting on this and getting to what you see before you, I've been assisted by a number of people on the bond and indebtedness side. Darlena Welkimer, who you've seen here, she's, her firm Baird Finance has led us in the last three general obligation bonds. She's very sharp and has as good a working knowledge of our debt obligations as anybody probably on the planet. I also want to thank Fire Chief Mike Thomas, who pushed and prodded and forced me to go back and to review and to rethink and so forth. I also want to thank the leadership of Local 1236. After all, when everything is said, the people who do the work for the department are the people represented by Local 1236. I have learned a lot talking with particularly Noah Millard, who's sitting here in the audience tonight. Don Zanigo was also very much involved in early conversations, and many of the people in the room tonight in uniform. There is something called the JMT Board. You set this up when we knew we were going to come into a regular annual assistance for the, to make up the gap between what we're able to charge for the transport of Medicaid patients from our ambulances to other locations, and that has four members on it, the chief and I, Noah and Don. It was purposely set up with just four, so that no party had the, an edge going in or at the end of the game. We had to arrive at consensus, and we arrived at a consensus in this background that's before you tonight. But in terms of the presentation, any errors are mine, and omissions would be mine. Okay, a lot of background here, almost 14 single-spaced pages, and I'm certainly not going to go through all of it, but I want to, at the highest level, make what I think is a convincing case. I want to present to you what I think are, what is the need, what's the public service need, which brings us to this conversation tonight, and I think that's where it starts. If you're a citizen in this, in this town, it isn't only about what will it cost us and where we're going to get the money. Do we really have to do this? I think that's the compelling question. So let's start there. We have been through a process like this, I will say parenthetically, in about, about two years ago, in the, in the middle of the COVID crisis, before we knew anything about ARPA, before there was even some of the earlier federal grant programs, we had frozen 12 positions in our government. Most everybody was taking a haircut in terms of expected wage increases. This council was helping downtown businesses, particularly in the hospitality industry. We were cutting back into our, into our general fund resources, but it was the right thing to do. And the other thing that was the right thing to do at the time, and we incorporated this sentiment into a, I think, a pretty bold and unique collective bargaining agreement with Local 1236, and that was to expand the shift strength of our firefighters. Now, that didn't get to why we're here tonight, but what it did do is to make it possible for the arriving crews to be in a better position to save life and property. But what's before you tonight is a plan to make sure that the response time of whatever number of members on shift is going to be in line with what can be, what certainly the national standard is and what can be considered in our community with the number of calls we're running today, the right, the right order and the right amount of time. The response time, as you know from the background here and maybe from your own reading, is what is basically the rolling, rolling time from when the apparatus, whether it's an ambulance or an engine, leaves the barn until it arrives at the scene of the incident. There is other time involved, people getting up, getting, getting into gear, jumping on the rigs, getting, getting to the incident. But four minutes is what the gold standard is, and as I said, in a couple places, there is no silver standard. So it's important to keep that in mind, because as, as many, many people in this community have come to find out, those men, extra minutes, if there were extra minutes, are the distance between people maybe surviving and not, and to be maybe a little bit less dramatic, but realistic, or having some severe impact from whether it's on their property or on their person. So we've looked at where we stand. We have three stations in town. There is one quadrant which makes up a large part of the seventh ward, the sixth ward, and parts of the fifth and fourth wards, and that's the southwest quadrant that does not have a station, never did have a station. Interestingly, it was back in the '90s when the Schnook subdivision was first conceived and ultimately approved, that an acre was set aside for a fire station, explicitly for a fire state, not just a public use, like sometimes is done. And that's the spot we're looking at. But why, why is that important? Why would that be the best spot? Why not some other spot? Well, a lot of our calls are going there, and an increasing number are going in the southwest side, not only to serve residents in that area, and there's some commercial business, of course, but also the blossoming, burgeoning, I guess you would say, industrial investment on the southwest side of the community. We are, as you can see from the various graphics in the background, we, in looking at the four-minute response coverage, we are deficient dramatically on that southwest side, more than any other quadrant in the city. That means that stations one, two, and three are traveling to the southwest side to provide the elemental service, and sometimes that works within that four-minute response coverage period. If there are simultaneous calls, which we're seeing a rise in, we're not only seeing a rise in calls, in fact, by more than 35% in the last five years, overall calls, that includes fire and EMS, but there's a 35, interestingly, a 37% rise in the same period in simultaneous calls. So the possibility of, of whenever you have these simultaneous calls, and you all know what I'm talking about here, so the bell is rung a couple of times, right within just moments of each other. And if all the other stations are busy, then, then there's going to be a longer response time. These facts together point toward the, the need for a station in the southwest quadrant. It happens that that land that was set aside is a pretty good location, not perfect, but it certainly checks the boxes. There is still room for a residential expansion in the southwest quadrant. There certainly has been a lot of industrial expansion, and those are two different kinds of fires and groups of incidents that we might be responding to, but we need the greatest number of talented people available to respond as soon as possible. So what's that going to cost? I'll just jump ahead to that, and we can come back and fill in as you have questions. Two, two kinds of costs. One is the building. Back in the, just before the, the winter holidays, we, the JMT Board invited a number of architectural firms that have experience in Northern Illinois in building fire stations and other things, of course, to make some presentations to us. We selected one, spent a total of about $6,000, it was within the city manager's authority, to work with one of them to look at some various layouts that might fit on the one-acre site that we have, which, by the way, as you can see in the background, is just south and west of the intersection of Manningglid and Taylor Street. And the, the graphic that you see in your background on page six is, is the best of what we saw. We went through a number of different iterations, but this was enough to get us to the threshold of being able to come up with some pricing for X square feet of building on a small lot, which we've done. And we come, we're not talking about building a palace here, we're talking about, although there will be push and pull, we have to have living quarters, we have to have an apparatus floor and storage space and the light and parking and stormwater retention and paving, but we're looking at about a 7,600-square-foot station all-in, that includes the bays, about $3,900,000 is our estimate, and say, well, that's not bad, but $511 per square foot is, it sounds phenomenal, but that's a lot of pretty expensive, not necessarily living quarters, but outside of living quarters, and all the things that have to go in these days into making sure that firefighters who work there are safe, having to do with exhaust systems that we put into our existing stations and not to, not to distant past. Throw in another $100,000 for soft costs, utility connections and so forth, you're about $4 million. And with closing costs and so forth, the cost of building, the building is, is going to be a little over $4 million to finance. And how the heck would we finance that? We have a pretty nice general fund reserve, and I've had a number of questions, good questions, and in fact, I briefly looked at this myself, and that is, let's just reach in that nice pot and pull it out. Well, a couple reasons why that doesn't make sense at this time. One is that the cash that we have to have on hand to pay our bills with the city, all the departments, is kept in a local bank. What we don't need, and that's most of what we have in reserve on, on paper here, is put with the Treasurer of Illinois in something called Illinois Funds, where we're making, get this, 5% right now. So it doesn't make sense to borrow at 3, whatever, and forego that, a sizable amount of our reserve, which we can make 5% on. So that, that's, that's one of the reasons. The other one is, we have, we have, as you know, we've talked about, I'm not going to talk about it at length tonight, we have a substantial long-term structural problem that does face our general fund, and that, those are the state pension obligations, which we want to meet, but we have a closed system, unlike, say, IMRF and some other open systems where you can re-amortize, we don't get to do that, although the legislature just recently extended the Armageddon date from 2040 to 2050, when you have to be 100% funded. Most, most of the fire departments and police departments in the state are under 50% funded now, and it's going to be hard, every year, an ever-increasing amount has to come out of their general operations and go toward that. Property tax is a big source of revenue, not just for us, but for others in the state, for funding that, that imbalance. So dipping into the, the general fund reserve is problematic for that reason as well. There's a chart, you've seen this kind of chart before on page seven in your background, which shows what our pension obligation is, what our levies are in recent years, and where we would be to, to meet the shortfall, the distance between what we feel is reasonable to levy against our property taxpayers in our community, and what our actuarial contribution is. Okay, so there's, there's that, but I, but I think what we can do, right now, about $1.8 million of the general fund is going on an annual basis to pay our outstanding general fund debt, bonds, bonded debt. There are a couple of refundings in that, which are actually saving us money, but most of the debt has to do with the police, paying off the police bonds, there were two bonds to make the police building some years ago. They're going to run till about 2030. They were going to be done in 2028, but you remember the flip and toss we did, now we're try to save the general fund from 1.8 million dollars we didn't think we had to spend? We basically put that over three years at the end of the terms of the existing bond. So instead of being done by twenty-eight, it's twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty again. But then, unlike most communities in northern Illinois and throughout the state, we're, we would otherwise be debt-free. So we should be able in our general fund to absorb the, the, all of the debt service for the proposed fire station. After the next three years, in fact, it will, it will be like we haven't changed our debt obligation and eventually starts going down. There's a detailed chart for you in your background, and I, I won't go any further into this, but on page nine, you can see how all that plays out. Finally, I want to talk to you about the fiscal impact of the staffing side. Talked about the capital side. On the staffing side, to have coverage, minimal coverage, we, we are, we're originally looking at five, a crew of five, a shift of five, excuse me, and to, we have to provide coverage seven days a week, three hundred sixty-five days a year, and there's one on, two days off. So there's basically three shifts of five that will be participating in that. That would give us fifteen new employees overnight. And we were worried, our, our work group, that we'd be able to afford that right out of, out of the gate. We had made the case just three years ago, why that was important to maintain that new level, which we didn't have before. Four was, was, if we had a good day, it was four, oftentimes it was three. So we have been back and forth and, and I, I think the, the best way to go at this point, I think I'm speaking for a number of the people in the room, is to go for a transitional shift strength of, call it a jump company of three, with the transition to be spelled out in a collective bargaining agreement, so it's not open-ended. There was a time twenty-some years ago, when I, I wasn't sitting here, I was sitting in the old city hall, and we were on the verge of, of opening station three. And at that time, I suggested, and I'll never, ever leave this down, the, the two and two system that we had, two on the ambulance, two on the engine, it worked great on paper. The problem, as we talked about in two thousand twenty at length, was you get an ambulance call about the same time a fire call comes into your, your zone or, or anywhere in town, and you're the only operating, so you can't, you show up with two to start, and that's just not possible. And now the standard is, is more than that on the arriving engine. So we got off of that, and now we have that shift strength at the other three stations. But to get this to work, and I think it can work, we, we're proposing this, this minimum shift of three to start, and that we come back to you, move up the, the opening of the collective bargaining agreement and roll up our sleeves and collaborative, collaboratively work together to find a way to get to five. And that way, everybody's all above board, everybody is pulling together in the same direction, and we get this done in a way, not only can we afford it in the short run, we can, but we're doing the right thing in the long run for the people who are responders. So I'll stop there. I, I imagine you have questions, and I, I'm sorry I danced over this so quickly, but I, I hope it helps.
Before I open it up for questions, just clarification, I think for people at home and just everyone in general, so I understand it as well, what you're saying is, you know, we're making five percent on the money that we have right now.
Correct.
If we took out a loan for 3.8 percent.
Yeah.
By doing so, that money that we're not using cash out of our reserves essentially, like instead of stroking a check to buy this thing, since we're making five percent, we're going to make 1.2 percent the difference.
Yep.
So we'll continue to earn.
Correct.
On ours, even though we've assumed more debt.
Correct.
So I think that's a thing called positive debt.
Correct.
There's times where debt is actually good. Then also, and I know you all read it in your background packet, but when we look at hiring a new firefighter, let's say it was seventy-something thousand dollars a year, the pension obligation to that is roughly sixty-two thousand. So really, a new hire is about a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty thousand dollars all-in. I'm using real rough numbers here. Real quick, just on that, my understanding is, the reason that is so high, it has nothing to do with the firefighter, it has everything to do with the pension crisis at the state of Illinois, that that is what we assume for, could be a police officer, could be a firefighter.
Right.
And that's why we really want to try and leave cash in the bank, essentially, is the plan for if the, if our state legislature cannot figure this out, which they have to, but if they can't, holding on, cash is king, holding on to as much cash as we possibly can, is beneficial in case that pension crisis really becomes more of a reality than it is right now.
That's correct.
Is that okay?
That's correct. Now, normally, the pension obligation, just looking at raw for the one person who's just hired, is about fifteen percent. But we can't ignore, and the general fund can't ignore, that, that gap, and we still have to pay that every year, so I included it in the calculation, so we're not running short in our calculation. It looks good on paper, but in a few years, we see that we're, we're not meeting the goal.
So counsel, what questions or comments do you have? All the women's is out.
Sorry, I gotta find my question. What, what are we anticipating the working population south of eighty-eight is going to be?
Yeah, good question. We, we have a pretty good idea what it is now. It's over a thousand people a day on the Metta site. The, if you're looking at the factory strength right now, it's about five hundred on the north side of the street, and that should grow by another three hundred with Amazon and Kraft Heinz coming on. And there will be others, but, so that's a lot of people. More often than not, our calls, you know, eighty-one percent are, are EMS calls now, and so that's slips and falls, worse, worse accidents, heart attacks, trouble breathing, choking, all, the whole range of potential, a hundred different scenarios where we might be running. And, and so what if all, the other three stations were moved, you know, there's, there's a four-car pileup at Thirty-Eight and Peace? We got two ambulances there, maybe three, and bingo, you get something on the southwest side. This is, we can, and better than I, members of the department can give you scenarios that happen on a regular basis, and so this, this location makes a lot of sense.
Yes.
So, yeah, I'm, I'm fully in support. I think another fire station's a great idea, and the numbers all make a lot of sense. One thing that a constituent brought to my attention was our lack of diversity in the fire department. So they just said that the numbers didn't look like they were very strongly diverse, and they didn't, they weren't necessarily representative of the population, and so I just want to note that and ask that you pay attention to that.
Yeah, and, and just, that's a good question. Thank you for bringing that up. So, so people in the, in the audience know and are watching tonight, so that the hiring for the police department and the fire department is done by the, by the Board of Hiring and Police Commissioners, it's a state statutory board. Mayor points persons to that board. In, in both cases, there are lists, hiring lists, that's also part of the state system, so people apply for the job, they go through a series of, of tests. Some are physical, some are, are tests, you have to appear before the board to be interviewed, there's a psychological test, there are other demanding thresholds. So in the case of our firefighter paramedic, excuse me, you also have to have a paramedic license before you can apply. So even before we advertise that we're going to be trying to fill a list, and we go out and we try to recruit people, whether it's in colleges, high schools, churches, not-for-profits and so forth, which we do religiously, and it goes in, in sequence, so the list might last a year, it might last two years, it might last three months, depending on how many people we're, we're hiring off of that list. If, if, and we want to get maybe thirty, forty people to apply, and then hopefully come away with half of that maybe on the list, that gives us that strength. We're out there, but ultimately, a lot of intervening individuals are going to either encourage them or not encourage them, they're going to help them get to the license training or not, or the license threshold. So we try to touch all those pieces. I can say our chief and our, our current leadership and the fire department, really, our, our whole department are leaning, trying very, very much to diversify the, the personnel, so that, as, as we've said here many times, that the people you see who are in the uniform arriving look a little bit more like you. And we're trying to do that, we're going to keep trying. That's all I can say. It, it's a, it is an imperative also of the Fire and Police Commission.
And I would think with the demographic of our community, I mean, Kishawaki Education Consortium has a great fire science program that is directly tied to the high school, essentially, high school students get to go out there. I would think that is just going to increase the opportunity more and more for diversification in the ranks, just need more candidates essentially to be able to choose from. What other comments or questions?
So, but.
Yeah, yeah.
So Mr. Nicholas, city manager, so basically you're saying just not enough minorities are filling out applications and going through the process, basically, right? There's so many.
Yeah, we, we'd like to get more, that's correct.
Well, you know, being a black man, this is what I would, you know, try to aim for, you know, and no disrespect to anybody, but like, I looked at an annual report and it says eighty-five percent of our fire department and firefighters and paramedics are eighty-five percent are white men. So I don't know, you know, what goes on at the firehouses and, you know, whatnot, but what could you do to make, you know, a minority feel welcome or like you fit in there? Because me personally, you know, if I was a fifteen, sixteen-year-old kid living in the Calvin, I got to see, you know, firefighters are, you know, mostly white, that would kind of, you know, make me feel a little bit, you know, standoffish and not, you know, want to go through that, you know, process, because it is a hard process. So I would just like for you guys to always, you know, understand and be kind of cognizant of, you know, even, I'm a forty-seven-year-old man, and I think about that daily, every day when I wake up or I go to UPS, you know, I get to see I'm, you know, one of, you know, a lot of black men. So I just would like for you to understand that, you know, because it's just, you know, it is what it is.
So two ways that happen almost on a daily basis that help people understand that that white person or whatever that color person is, is there to help them and, and decent person, is the service we provide every day, the calls we run every day. When we pick people out, you know, in, in the supermarket aisle, wherever it is, there are people bending over to help save a person's life, to give them aid, and, and these are not people coming to hurt, these are coming, people coming to, to help. And, and then also, I never have had trouble recruiting fire crews, no matter how busy the day, whenever there's an event in the community and it's warmer weather and, and kids want to see what it's like to hold the hose or talk or whatever, there, there is an abundance of those opportunities that our firefighters take advantage of throughout the year. That's not all we have to do. Ultimately, people reach that age where they can apply and they, and they already have their license. So at that point, they're committed to the profession. So the, the key is to get them to be committed to the profession, because once they are committed, then, then it's a matter of, well, the, is a, is a person getting through the psych test, is a person, has a person ever broken a law or whatever, all the things that, you know, fire and police, let's face it, they're coming into your house, so there's a higher standard than it is to be a carpenter or even a city manager, right? So that's important.
So chief, I, I mean, one thing, I mean, we definitely look at our website to make sure that the diversity that we do have is being reflective on it. So if someone was interested in being a firefighter at the city of Cal, at least they can see that there is an effort for diversity, and maybe a DEI statement on our website, things like that, for sure. Just not, not, not downplaying it, just steering it back to the four million dollars we're thinking of spending on the fire station. Any other comments or questions on that? Yes, Alderman Perkins.
What's our current response time with our existing calls?
So.
Because I said, there's a lot of information.
Four minutes, do we, do we break it down, really, you know, every day? Sometimes we hit it right on the mark all the time and other times.
I'm just thinking broader, broader, like on an annual basis.
I'll, I'll let the chief respond to that.
What's our average response time? And what do we think it could go to? We have that information.
So to have an average, I don't have an average for you, but in the quadrant that we're presenting, we currently, our station three can get to that quadrant at a specific intersection in Devon Air Farm, which is the first intersection in six and a half minutes. Station two can get there in seven, and station one can get there in eight and a half minutes.
So that's all in excess of four. In that area, we're losing then every call.
Every day.
Basically.
And then if we get, the, the dual calls too can just exacerbate the whole situation from the time.
Yeah, and that's a whole domino effect at that point.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Others? Yes, Alderman McAdams.
So last Wednesday, I woke up with cardiac event. I was one-seventy over eighty, and I had a terrible chest pain, and I dialed 911, and I stepped outside my front door and I could hear the siren while I was still on the phone with 911. So I want to commend our paramedics for their fantastic work on Wednesday. I always appreciate it when I get good medical care, and I'd like to see that kind of care extended to the rest of the city. I would think it wouldn't matter where you live, you should be able to call and immediately get to the hospital when you need to.
Yes, Alderman.
Chief, Tom, it's great work by you and your predecessors. This has been a conversation for a while, because as we know, a component of growing business and industry will be a need for growth in public safety services. So thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Smith.
I probably had a fourteen-page document too, Bill, but I'll back off. That's just, some of my guys are probably laughing at me. Yeah, this is important, the response time as well has got to go down. I mean, from personal experiences, as well, Alderman McAdams, I agree, to stand out there and hear the sirens, it, a minute is an hour, so every minute counts. Second thing I had is ISO rating. Well, chief, will that reduce our ISO rating, you think? Or am I, people probably wonder, what am I talking about? So.
Insurance agency, services agency, which helps set the fire insurance and liability insurance rates.
Our home insurance too, so. I would have guessed that a four station would reduce it.
I, I don't know if we'll go from a one to a, we can't go to a none, but I can tell you that we, we are at risk of going backwards, and that's not acceptable.
And I want people to understand, that's your homeowner's insurance. If yours is like mine, it continues to go up, and that ISO, that's what the insurance company's based it on. The other thing I would, I like about this station is, I'm sure you have more complex responses from the south end of town now, for all the manufacturing going down there. Years ago, we had A.O. Smith, for example, but now, some of these places are extremely complex and extremely large. Three M, for example, my brother works, it's, you know, you, you, it's not an easy to find people in there when you need an ambulance, so you lose time getting in there. I'm sure Facebook will be the same, you know, not, you know, Ferrara, my neighbor fell, he was in the inside, it took a while once they get there to even get in to get them. So these are, I think, building the station lowers these unseen response times, and it also takes the stress off the guys and girls in the department, because, you know, that's stressful for them as well, so.
Yes, Alderman, Alderman Zada.
So I'm just thinking, like, clearly this fourth station is imperative, but with the growth we're seeing south of town, you know, and I know we're only looking at a five-year plan here, but it makes me think that we're looking at, you know, ten years out, we need to be thinking of a fifth station or perhaps sooner, especially if our working population is looking like, you know, the same size of the population as each of these quadrants.
Well, happily, I can say I don't think so, and here's why. It doesn't mean that there won't be a replacement at some point for station two on South Seven Street, our oldest station, and really not up to the, the standard that we'd like to have at this point in, in our history as a city. That's some other time. But the buildings that are being built down there are safer than a lot of the buildings that we're responding to now, and, and the people who are working there, it's, obviously, there, there are some shifts that are going, most of the day, some, some are ultimately going to have three shifts, there are two shifts. shifts primarily right now. So, there's work to do, but there's also a lot more safety requirements inside buildings than there was thirty years ago, you know, or more than that. So, just the sheer numbers, the weight of the numbers doesn't necessarily dictate. We want to make sure that the buildings that are being built are going to pass all of, not only our codes, but UL factors that apply throughout, for instance, something like Facebook, which is building around the world, there's probably no more heavily regulated building, construction types than what they have right now.
So, unless our geography drastically expands, ultimately, it's more about having four stations in four quadrants to have that time from tone to be able to meet the four-minute gold standard. So, it's really distance to and probably amount of firefighters that we have staffing those.
It's not by accident. And you recall when we proposed the GMT funding of the new ladder truck, that is going to have an articulated end to the lattice, no lattice, the ladder, so that we can reach over parapets, and so that when the platform comes down, it's going to actually be level on the surface, so people can put a stretcher up on it without having to basically hand the stretcher up to somebody and the cage itself is tipped. Hopefully, those days are over.
Alderman Smith?
Maybe I'm wrong, Bill, but Sycamores, I mean, they are also contemplating either a third station as well. So, obviously, they're feeling the growth is where I'm going with this.
They want to redo, I think they want to redo the original station.
I'm not familiar with Sycamores.
I'm close, so you know where I'm at.
Good answer, city manager.
I was just throwing it out there that the need in our area is growing for more fire coverage. So, I think the police chief's laughing at me. So... Another thing I have is on our testing. They want, people to understand, there's a certain parameters that are out of our control, and that's the paramedic license. That is governed by the state of Illinois. That is, they have to be licensed by a doctor before we even get someone to come in.
Department of Public Health and so forth.
Public Health. So, I want people to understand that we don't even, we don't even see a candidate until they have that license, and they have to go through sixteen-week course, twenty-week course, somewhere in there now, right? So, you know, we'll take anybody. I mean, I know our application was open, extended, if I remember correctly, so...
But the point is well-taken, that before a person commits professionally to spending the time and the money to get that license, which is a major commitment in a young life, they have to have the passion, they have to have the interest. And so, how do we encourage that? And that's what Alderman Walker was suggesting. How do we get to that? And it can happen in a lot of small ways, like I was describing, that happened with getting our fire department, where we can, where we have time, out to a lot of community events, which they're happily, readily do every month through the year. But, it also takes more than that. The recruiting has to be more purposeful and consistent and constant, basically. We have recruiting videos that we're working on now, and so, we need to accentuate the value of that interest and commitment.
Maybe a little lost task, but where does someone go? I mean, it used to be before we become locally paramedic training, where does someone go before they even get here? Maybe that's a question, sorry, Mike, I just had to.
Are you asking where do they go for schooling?
For paramedic class, yeah.
A lot of community colleges are, have programs, our community college, Kishawaki College does.
Okay.
And then, there are many hospital-based programs out there as well in the larger communities.
I just wanted to get that out, people understand where, you know, it's not just come to us, the fire department, but reach out. There are, and I'm sure you would answer those questions. Thank you.
Alderman Larson?
I know too, a lot of the people out there might be like, well, where did this come from? You know, like, it just like popped out of nowhere. Well, when I was elected two years ago, I had reached out to different department heads, and I had reached out to, at the time, acting Chief Thomas, and he had taken me through the different firehouses and introduced me to a lot of the staff. And we got down to Station House Two, and I was like, okay, this, this needs some TLC here. And I said, you know, about building a new one, and I said, oh, you know, well, you could go here or there, and he's like, oh, I already have an idea. And so, this was two years ago. So, this is to everybody else in this room. It's like, well, this is a nice new idea. And no, it's been being thought of and tweaked and decided way before it got to this. So, I'm real excited about this.
Land was set aside twenty years ago as well.
Land was set aside, you're right. And every fire report, particularly for the last three years, has been talking about the possibility of the need because of the rising calls and simultaneous calls. But, I'll say one other thing for the timing, and why not tonight, why not three months from now or three months before this? People who are not familiar with the rhythm of budgeting and financial decisions here in the public sector, we're on a calendar-year budget. Our audit is usually not presented until just before the end of, it'd be the last meeting in June. At that point, that's the go-time to start planning. I mean, we're obviously talking and thinking about what else we need, but until we have at least a working draft of the final numbers from the year before, and that's not till usually the end of May, and then it's prettied up and gussied up in the audit and made more public, then you don't have the grist to work on. And then the other thing is, in our type of public body, some of our key revenues are three-month lagging. So, we don't get to see, as we produce, we don't get to see a sale, and even if it's a delayed payment of ninety days or sixty days, whatever. So, it might be three or four months before we can register that. So, here we are, planning a budget for the next year, and I thought this is the time to get in right now and show you what in about thirty days from tonight, you're going to see in some harder numbers on the general fund and some capital numbers and so forth. I wouldn't want to blow it by you then, but this is about as tight as we can do it, or else we would have had to wait another year in order to make things happen, so that by November, you're voting on a budget. Oh, that's, there were some practical considerations that came in, and then there was the underlying interest in compelling data that's showing us we really ought to make a decision here pretty soon.
Well, I think you're, I'm seeing a lot of heads nodding.
Okay. Thank you.
Unless I'm incorrect to speak now, but I think we have city manager move forward with his team to take this to the next steps then. Is that what you need, city manager?
Yes, thank you.
You got it. Exciting for y'all. Yeah, it's going to be neat to see over the next few years, just it all unfold. All right. And chief, we can dismiss them, right?
Oh, yeah, I just want to say thank you very much. And, yeah, the guys can hang out or head out.
You've got plenty to do. Don't feel like you've got to stay here. We really appreciate you coming out there in support of this, just in case we had any questions. But, by all means, go do what you do best, not stand around in the basement of a library. Thank you all.
Thanks, guys.
All right, moving on to, get through these fourteen pages. All right. Resolutions, Agenda Item J, number one, Resolution 2023-074, authorizing the waiver of a competitive bidding and approval, approving an agreement with Lane Christensen Company for maintenance inspection and repair of well number sixteen and well number seventeen, in the amount of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, with staff authority to approve miscellaneous repairs in an amount not to exceed a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Walker, city manager.
Thank you, mayor. Brian Faber is always, gives a very thorough background report. You've had a chance to look at that. My summary draws heavily from that. We've got two wells that were last inspected two thousand six, two thousand eleven, respectively. It's time, it's really a little bit past time, and we would normally pull them and inspect them so that we don't get any surprises in the middle of the night where a well goes out. The utility division has gotten a quote from Lane Christensen, and they've been working with us for a number of years now. They are a regional company. They're very familiar with our system and the type of pump and piping and motor that we have at each well. And these would be pulled, they'd be reinstalled, hopefully after some repairs are made, but without any major replacement to end up pulling more than what we've intended. Nevertheless, you don't know until you do pull the equipment. And so, what we've got before you tonight is a price, a base price, with a not-to-exceed price, another ten thousand above that, to do a few things if we need to. If it exceeds that, we'll come back to you and ask for your permission to hit a firmer number that might be in excess of the city manager's authority.
Any questions or comments, council? All right, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Resolution 2023-074 passes. Moving on to Resolution 2023-075, authorizing the award of a contract to current contracting incorporated in the amount of a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars and five cents, for the resurfacing of Greenbrier Road, with staff authority to approve change orders up to a combined project total not to exceed one hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Walker, city manager.
Thank you, mayor. And I want to thank Zach Gil for his work in cranking this out, and also for other work he's been doing in the Antioch and North area, plan-wise and design-wise and working with neighbors. So, this is another example of that good work. The bid that we got, we only got one bid, but we went out for bid as we're required to do, and public announcement of the bid, opening and so forth. This project is pretty much within our sweet spot, what we guessed it would be from the time that you approved the budget last year. The base bid was a hundred, almost a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. Another five thousand was asked for here for some of those things that come up as you're resurfacing, some curb repairs, some other things that have to be done, sometimes manual repair. So, the not-to-exceed price is a hundred and eighty-four thousand. We recommend your approval.
Council. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Resolution 2023-075 passes. That's awesome. All right, Agenda Item K, ordinances. Second reading, we have none. So, Agenda Item L, ordinances, first reading, number one, ordinance 2023-029, approving the rezoning of parcels along East Lincoln Highway, East Locust Street, North Seventh Street, North Eighth Street, and North Tenth Street, from the SFR-1, Single Family Residential District, SFR-2, Single Family Residential District, LC Light Commercial District, LI Light Industrial District, and HI, Heavy Industrial District, to the PD-I, Planned Development Industrial District, Nearing Electrical Works Company. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Perkins, city manager.
Thank you, mayor. I want to thank Ray Ha and Tom Jakowski, who are in the audience tonight, and unfortunately had to wait until we got to the ordinances at the end of the agenda, but I appreciate their patience, and they are here to answer any questions you may have also about what's before you tonight. I'll be very brief. This has been through the Planning and Zoning Commission. Two pieces to this. Back in the fall, in October, the council approved an ordinance which authorized a development agreement with Nearing Electrical Works Company, and part of that agreement called for the rezoning of existing parcels along East Locust Street, North Eighth, North Ninth, and Lincoln Highway and so forth. So, that's included in this. That's a pro forma response. It took some time to, we had to find, as you can see in your background, deeper background, there had to be surveys and parcel areas and defined in Platts. So, but there's another piece here, and I think this is a hopeful, very hopeful piece. We've been talking in this room and media about some multimillion-dollar investments south of the tollway, and we have every reason to be proud of that. But, I think we have every reason also to be proud of what Nearing Electrical Works is looking to do on, along East Lincoln Highway in an industrial area, not the kind of conflicts that had existed along Locust between some residential and some, a longer enduring group of buildings that have been industrial since early part of the twentieth century. But nevertheless, there are, in such situations, potential clashes. In this, in the case of the additional parcels, which, with those parcels along Lincoln Highway and Locust, come to about twenty-seven acres, we're talking about an old and industrial place where some, one-time, well-known businesses and occupied businesses such as Ideal Industries had generations of employees going through and families surrounding, not the environs, but surrounding those lives. A lot of those buildings have been vacant for a long time. They're coming in, they're going to tear down some, they're going to clean up the area. They're adding more acreage for production and also storage, but storage is shielded from the public along Lincoln Highway, and some room for growth. So, this is a multi-decade, multimillion-dollar project, and I'm happy to be the place where Nearing Electrical Works wants to continue to grow. So, Planning and Zoning Commission looked at what's before you tonight, and unanimously recommended your approval. I support their recommendation.
Council. Alderman, please.
Just like to thank Mr. Ha for his continued investment in the community. It's a pretty exciting thing, pretty cool thing to see developing in DeKalb, and to have it done locally is really cool.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Others? I would say the same thing. To have been investing in DeKalb for as long as you have, it's aspirational. I know you've had opportunity to go to different communities potentially, especially with this latest expansion, but you chose DeKalb. That's not missed on many of us that live in this community. So, I, like the rest of us, just want to personally thank you for working with us, always trying to figure out a win-win solution to obstacles that may come before us, and your continued investment in the City of DeKalb is greatly appreciated. So, thank you, Mr. Ha. Hearing no other comments or questions, roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Ordinance 2023-029 passes on first reading. I'd like to take a motion to waive second reading?
So moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion to waive second reading by Alderwoman Larson, and seconded by, was that Alderman Walker?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Second reading has been waived for ordinance 2023-029. Now, get to work, gentlemen. Thank you so much. And by all means, you don't have to stay. You've got plenty on your plate, so have a great night. All right, so I do have public comment for the next item, although Nancy, it says for two and three. I don't know if you really want to speak at two and three, or...
Why don't you, let me make my statement.
Yeah, you betcha. And can you identify yourself? By the way, Nancy, you have three minutes to speak.
I've timed myself twice. I should be okay. Okay, my name is Nancy Doherty. I'm here for the clarification concerning the conversion of Normal Road. I attended the June twenty-sixth city council meeting when the considerations were presented regarding Normal Road, ordinance 2023-031. These considerations included a conversion of the signalized intersection at Normal Road and Lucinda Avenue to a roundabout, and the concept of fully vacating Normal Road and turning it into a pedestrian mall or quadrangle. Today on really identify it very clearly, whoever drafted those up, it was very nice. And in this, it also stated, the city engineer, Mr. Zach Gil, stated he would like to proceed with temporary signage and traffic barriers in the advance of the 2023 Fall Semester by legally establishing the revised traffic schemes. I'm assuming we're talking these. So my question is, how many cars currently access North Normal Road and Lucinda Avenue by Normal Road entrance at Lincoln Highway? I'm one. So I go up Lincoln Highway and I go up Normal to get to where I need to go. Because how many of those cars are going to be inconvenienced and directed somewhere else? Also, what will be that revised traffic scheme to North Normal Road from Lincoln Highway? Thank you.
You bet, Nancy.
Thank you. All right, I would take a motion to bring Number Two, Ordinance 2023-030, regulating vehicular traffic on Normal Road between West Locust Street and Lucinda Avenue by prohibiting access and use by motor vehicles except those authorized for emergency response or critical maintenance, to the floor. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Walker, seconded by Alderman McAdams, city manager.
Thank you. I'll start off and then in answer to Nancy's specific questions, I'll ask the city engineer to address that directly. So there are two ordinances here, and when the council looked at this, the council, generally the consensus, if I remember correctly, was in favor, but needed more design work clearly, and that's still needed. But here we are, we're about a month away from the return of students, the international students, honor students, sports teams, support team members and so forth, they're all back by the third week in August, so we're just a month away. And NIU in particular, and the city in partnership, thought it would be good to see how that closing works and to be able to enforce that for the time being in this transition, we need to have some signage. And signage, it's got to be in the code for an officer to be able to say, you know, move along, otherwise it's just somebody threw a sign up on a Jersey barrier. So we're, that's what we're looking to do, but as for the specific question, I'm going to defer to Zach about traffic and displacement and so forth.
It's council, one minute, here's our response to that. Okay.
Hello, Mr. Gil. Good evening. So when we do anything to alter a major intersection like this, we do what's called an IDS, an Intersection Design Study.
Of course.
So, and they put these projected numbers onto that. So at their last study, right now, we actually shape these things around what's called a peak hour. They don't, you don't, they study the whole day, we design an intersection around what's called the peak hour. So the peak hour right now, what they have for that, the normal that would be interrupted is about 250 cars during that peak hour. Again, you don't have many people at 2:00 in the morning going down or right, we're more concerned about 8:00 AM, we're concerned about 4:00 PM, things like that. So if you spin that across, you could say in those kind of more critical windows, I guess you could say a daily total of about 500 is what that would be. So again, we don't know the total origin destinations, you know where you're going. A lot of people are just going to the parking garage, right? So they'll simply go to the parking garage a different route. So we don't have that full, perfect information of, hey, I went from Vinnie's Pizza and drove all the way up to Dresser Road, okay, you went all the way through. A lot of people are locally going right to destinations in that area on Normal Road. So we don't have that full knowing everyone's true origin destination, but I would say as far as those critical cars, about 500 a day is what it would be.
Council. Questions, comments? Hearing none?
Yeah, I got some.
Oh yeah, Alderman Walker.
So, you know, I got a lot of emails, of course, about this. But you know, the thing about you is, man, when I was up here, you know, the first read or whatever, I had no idea what you were talking about. But if people have issues, if people have issues, just give this man a call and he will take you out there and explain exactly what he means. And you got to open my eyes up, you know? And I have a couple of questions, so. So basically, we're going to be pushing a lot of traffic to Annie Glidden and Lucinda, right? So there were, so what kind of studies can you honestly do to verify, you know, the amount of, you know, traffic you will get in that area? Because it's kind of like this with NIU, the first month, everybody's excited, you know, all out there, but then, you know, after a window's off, October, November, we don't have that much traffic. So how do you honestly get a constant, you know, measurement of how, you know, traffic flows in that area?
So again, we do the traffic studies where they literally count cars. When the first job Zee does an engineer, they make you go stand in the corner and count those cars. There's also, there's some digital collection devices and things. So some of it is what we call projections, we take percentages, and we know there's so many people, like I said, to southbound, these 500 people. Now, we don't know where they're going when they go south. So maybe some of them want to make that turn to the east, and we project a certain amount of them to do that, and then we project a certain amount of them, they'll turn right and go to Annie Glidden.
Right.
So that's the way we do that. We can always dynamically continue to study this, right? So we have these projections, that's the best you can do is project these. We can always study that other intersection at Annie Glidden and Lucinda again after the changes take place and see what's impacted there. Do we adjust some of the signal timing then? Do we have longer queues for certain lanes or certain turns? Just like anything else, right? It's like water running down, you know, you get, build up someplace, you open a valve a little bit further and you go. So it's kind of like a network like that. So I couldn't tell you right offhand because I don't know where everyone's going ultimately, and that's what we really need to know, so.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for all your help with all that.
That was a great, I really appreciate the time you spent with me doing that, yeah.
Not, this is our time, we can't do it during public comment, man. Yes, Alderwoman Larson.
Just like First Street being closed with the bridge, I would normally come down First Street, and I'm not on First Street, but way up, and so I'm coming down. Now that I know it's closed, I don't even go that way, I go another way. And I would think with this closure, there's a few people who live right on Normal, if you want to get to 38, you're going to be impacted. But the farther you get away from that, you're going to be like, well, I can cut over Crane to Annie Glidden, or I can go this way on Hillcrest, you can start, you'll start making your own diversions. And so that's why I see the benefit of the signage ahead of time, because before you actually close it, see how people just figure out a new route to get to where they're going.
Yeah, that's an excellent point, and that speaks to your point, Alderman Walker, is that everyone isn't taking the same diversion, right? It's not like all lemmings, oh, we all are going right to here and taking a right, like, they're going to find other places to network and they're going to make turns earlier. Boy, I want to get on Annie Glidden way farther north because I'm going down and past and I'm not even part of the problem, you know, anymore there, so, yeah.
Alderman Walker, yes.
So that light at the corner, well, not the corner, I don't know, it's not really a corner, but by the, on Normal and Lincoln Highway, West Lincoln Highway, so that light would be pointless then, right?
Hopefully, yeah. In the short term, because that's a state route and that requires more coordination, we are leaving that little stub basically south of the parking garage and Lincoln Highway that has to stay as is until we get clearance from the state to turn that into one way as well. But yes, that would be the ultimate vision, we have made that light unnecessary, yeah.
Be great, because it seems like you always hit both those darn things.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alderman Verbic.
What an outstanding response to certainly our discussions and our Ward Six meetings over the years with the safety of Normal and the blind spots around the buses and everything else. This is great, so thank you.
Alderman Walker.
Hey, so how would this affect, I know you're like, what do you have to, so the bus turnaround on Carroll, the Home Student Center, how would this, you know, affect that because of, it's already hectic over there now and we're adding extra bus routes, you know, things of that nature, so, you know?
So there are three routes, and in the original background from the consideration of whenever it was a few weeks ago, we did, you know, coordinate with the Transit Department, and there are three routes that are interrupted by this Normal Route. Only one of those is now going to also utilize the Home Student Center turnaround, right? So the other two actually don't need to add into that congestion there. Also, obviously, there's been many sit downs with my counterparts at the university, you know, through this whole process. They already think it needs some improvements on its own regardless of what we do, so they say, hey, this is a great motivation, let's rethink our own little bus turnaround itself. So I don't think it should be a significant issue. And the other thing too, the roundabout itself actually will allow the buses some extra flexibility. Now if you have a route that's headed eastbound on Lucinda and they want to pick someone up at home, they can literally just ride around the roundabout and go back to Annie Glidden, they wouldn't be stuck going around the block on these residential streets and off streets. So we add some flexibility to the whole network there.
Hey, and you know, the Greyhound, I think you were explaining to me, so the Greyhound would pick up or, you know, there would be a little area on, I guess, going north, right at the corner of Lincoln Highway and Normal, right?
By the parking garage?
By the parking garage, so they would have a little, so they can just load up there, then just make a left onto Locust, would it be?
Yes.
West Locust, right? And just get on out of there.
Yeah, and they're, obviously Greyhound is not an intercity, right, multiple nodes. They're coming in because home was at the time just seemed like the most sensible spot to go. Really, all they care about is we want one stop on campus, load them up, and they, actually it's better for them, they want to get back to Lincoln Highway and get on their way and get back to, you know, head back towards the city, so we'll accommodate them very well.
So, okay, well, I got one more, I'm sorry, man. So, okay, so I believe it's, God, I can't think of this street, that's crazy, my boss would be mad at me. But, okay, so if you make a left on the Locust, then you come up on another street. And if you make, yeah, well, yeah, Carroll, I guess, yeah. And if you make a right, all you have is parking.
Parking.
So how could we somehow slow that parking or, you know, that traffic that way so people can just get in and just keep going out? You know, maybe a yield type of thing, or am I making sense?
You are, yes. Yeah, I think, again, that's a street network thing that we reevaluate, I do think that makes some sense. We've almost created a square, if you will, around the parking garage, and maybe those become the dominant movements, and therefore, if you're leaving the parking on Carroll, then you would yield to those people because that's the dominant movement, we're servicing that parking garage and you could yield to them. So, yeah, there are many ways to reconsider all that when we see the...
We'll learn a lot over the school year.
Yeah.
Once we put the barricades up and see how traffic actually flows, yeah.
Appreciate it.
Any other comments, questions? Yes, Alderman Perkins.
So I just want to, one clarification as well, so in the future, there will be something coming back or something in the documentation that says that NIU has to maintain this in the condition that we're talking about for official access, if you will.
There has to be an agreement.
An IGA or something.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, this is setting up the barricades and starting the process to see what looks like.
Got it.
All right, hearing no others, roll call please.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Ordinance 2023-030 passes on first reading, I would take a motion to waive second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderwoman Zazada. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Second reading has been waived for Ordinance 2023-030. Nancy, would you like to take, you're good? Okay.
I would just like to ask what was going to be the direction, I mean, if I'm stating now when this takes place?
Here, you'll have to come up to the microphone because people can't hear you then.
He's the man that's going to answer, I'm sorry. Actually, how will I go to North Normal Street? Are you now stating that I'm going to have to go to Annie Glidden from 35, come up Annie Glidden and come across Lucinda to get to Northern Normal? That's what you're stating, that's going to be the access once you close this down?
Yeah, you can go Annie Glidden or you can go south through the Elitus Hore district, but I'd recommend Annie Glidden.
Okay, thank you very much.
You betcha. All right, Item L3, Ordinance 2023-031, amending Chapter 51 Traffic Schedule A One-Way Traffic as it pertains to establishing one-way traffic on Normal Road from Lincoln Terrace to West Locust Street. Can I have a motion to bring this ordinance to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Walker, city manager.
Thank you, and the graphic that's on your page 17 illustrates a little bit, there is already a one-way east on Lincoln Terrace. We need to, ultimately, there will be one-way from, on Normal, from Lincoln Terrace to West Locust, so one block on the east side of the parking deck, and that will be one-way, and that's what this is doing. So another piece of the puzzle. Recommend your approval.
Council, questions, comments? Hearing none, roll call please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Ordinance 2023-031 passes on first reading, I'd take a motion to waive second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Comments or questions, council? Hearing none, roll call please.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Or second reading has been waived for Ordinance 2023-031, we are on our way to a quad. All right, moving on to Agenda Item M, Reports and Communications, council, who would like to kick us off? Looking for a volunteer? Alderwoman Zazada.
I'm going to plan to have a ward meeting Tuesday, September 12th, from 5:00 to 6:00 PM, location to be determined.
Okay, Alderman Smith.
I'm going to have a ward meeting, but the date to be determined once things settle down in the fall.
Alderman McAdams.
No report.
Alderman Walker?
No report.
No report. Alderman Verbic.
Ward Six Ward Meeting, keeping the theme, is scheduled for Thursday, August 3rd, from 6:30 to 8:00 PM at the Police Department Community Room for specifically about the fire station, which would be located in Ward Six, along with the Normal Road closure, which is also in Ward Six. Both have had very favorable response and in effect, as I mentioned, about Normal Road in particular, but initially, there's a lot of police people with that quicker response in particular, but initially, there's a lot of pleased people with that quicker response time ahead for Station Four. Thank you.
Alderman Perkins.
Norport.
Alderman Larson.
I had three different meetings in the last two weeks. I'm on the Environmental Committee, and they're continuing work on the new sustainability plan, and then I'm also on the County Visitors Bureau, and I'm getting really excited about the new plans for NIU homecoming, and the city working together.
It's going to be cool.
Yeah, a lot of cool things happening with that, and they're also working on becoming a separate, there'll be two, the same CBB, but also a, what do I want to say? If you want to donate money right now to the CBB, your money is not tax.
501(c)(3).
There you go, I knew there was letters for that, thanks, Bill. Anyways, they're working on getting that, so anybody who wants to make donations, it'll be taxed right off, so they're wrapping that up, so they're excited about that. And then I'm also on the University Village Collaborative, and they're working on a job fair among all the different entities in August.
Awesome.
Me, I look at my calendar, it seems like it was kind of a light couple of weeks, but it wasn't, but just things of note, one, went to Voluntary Action Centers, they had a legislative lunch invite, it was a great, they had a lot of state legislators, not only congress, not, state congressmen, yeah, and women, and Sue Resin had representative, Senator Sue Resin had representation there, as well as mayors from the various areas, and it was just great to see a local nonprofit that really got together and did a great presentation advocating for what they need in order to be more successful in our community. You don't see that very often, it was very well organized and very well done, and we had a lot of excellent information. Also, oh, it just doesn't matter, Meta had an award ceremony where they awarded, I think it was, what, 12 grants to various nonprofits from?
16, I think.
Yeah, DeKalb and all over the county, that's a grant cycle that they're going to have multiple times a year, so, you know, we keep hearing about Meta saying they want to make a significant impact in everywhere they have a physical location, and we continue to see that from that organization, and Mortenson, the contractor out there, which was just absolutely wonderful. But overall, oh, yeah, I met with Paul Castle, he's the dean of the College of Visual and